All right. Call the work session for September ninth for the site plan review technical advisory committee meeting to order. Coram and Eric is joining us on teams. First item of business is eleven fifty-one Sagamore Avenue for site plan approval, site plan review. All right, welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Drew Wolihowski with Haley Ward, representing the applicant Build America. So we're here today for a introduction to the board for a new residential development at eleven fifty-one Sagamore Avenue. As you can see from the plan we provided, we are proposing four single-family residential units on this lot. The board may be familiar with a project that occurred very recently on the lot just to the south of ours. I believe it's eleven fifty Sagamore. It's about the same developer, a very similar project. You can see they had developed a single building with four units and associated parking, and we're on the lot just north of that. We're essentially looking at a, pretty much a mirrored layout with our four units on the north side of the lot and then parking to the south. Rather than having one single building, we did decide to go with four individual units for this. The lot will be kept as one single lot, so this will be a condominium-style setup with an HOA established for the site. So as you can see from the drawing we provided, we haven't delved too deeply into design yet. The intent of this meeting was to just get the board's initial thoughts on our layout, make sure there wasn't anything really too outstanding that prevent this layout from moving forward. You can see we did provide a site data table, some of the site restrictions, just to make sure we complied with all of the applicable zoning standards for this MRO zone. Starting off, looking at the density within the zone, we were allowed one unit per seventy-five hundred square feet. Our lot is about thirty thousand square feet total, which allowed four units, so that's why we did go with the four proposed units. Looking at parking, we are required to have one point three spaces per unit for a total of six spaces. With this design, we do have garages, so there'll be four spaces provided via those garages. We are going to look at adding two additional spaces somewhere along the road, likely parallel spaces. With this layout here, we don't currently show those, but we're gonna have to finagle those in there. Just by moving around the buildings, they're shrinking some of those back decks, some to make those work. You can see we did show the side, rear, and front setbacks on this plan, so we adhere to all of those. There are no wetlands on the property or adjacent to the property, so we don't need to worry about any wetland buffers or anything like that. So with the current layout, we aren't expecting to need any variances. One thing to note with this project is, it's my understanding that developer is going through a few different permits for this project. The first one is a demolition permit. This is Tom Frango, so Build America, the developer. Gee, as I was saying, the client, or the applicant did already obtain a demolition permit for the existing building on site, so Tom may be able to speak on the timeline as to when that will take place. The second permit will be another site plan permit just for the utility stubs along Sagamore Ave. The developer didn't want to have those stubs in put in as soon as possible, just so once the rest of the site gets built up, they can tie into those right away and not have to wait just to get that all taken care of. So that'll be coming as well. And then the third is just the site planner view for the remainder of the site, other than those utility stubs, which is what we're here to present today. So again, we haven't dug too deeply into the design yet at this point, but I can just speak briefly on what we're expecting. Regarding stormwater, we are expecting something very similar to the property to the south. The site will drain to grade from east to west. You can see on our plan, we've labeled the proposed rain garden at the far left end of the site. There is currently a rain garden that serves the adjacent lot to the south. And once we look into this, we may have a, just one single large stormwater BMP to treat both sites, or we'll do an individual one for ours, but again, we'll likely contain it to that leftmost area. And once we dig into the design, we'll have something more fleshed out for you down the road. Gee, utilities, like I mentioned, the applicant is preparing another application just for those stubs. He's already been in coordination with the city on what they would like to see for that. It's in my understanding they wanted separate water services for each of the buildings, so that's something that will accommodate. It's also my understanding there's a pressurized.
We allow one water service to, per lot.
We'll go through that later.
Their own pressurized pump that will again tie into the city system on Sagamore. Yeah, I think those are the main points at this point. So again, I'd be looking forward to hearing any comments the board might have. Any suggestions, comments, or questions just to help get this layout revised and something we can move forward with the future site planner view. See, unless, Tom, you have anything else to add, I just gave a quick, high-level overview of the project, so yeah, I guess I'll turn it over to the board.
Thank you. Comments? Fire suppression because they're so close to each other, is that a thing?
Actually, it'd be fire suppression unless they can put a turnaround, which there's no room for. Do the fire lane being greater than one hundred fifty feet.
Yeah, we can account for that sprinklers.
Okay, so what you're gonna want to do then is you're gonna want to bring an eight-inch main in off Sagamore Ave. You're gonna have individual fire suppression and domestic line coming off that eight-inch line that's gonna go underneath the driveway to each unit, and then you're gonna show a flushing hydrant at the end of the eight-inch main down by that, somewhere above that rain garden, somewhere that's not in the way for flowering. Okay? And then as far as the sewer laterals, you're gonna bring in one sewer line that's gonna serve all four buildings. Each house will have its own pump, and then we'll pump into that common force main that will then go out inside more avenue.
There is a stub to that lot that was left as part of the project. It is only an inch and a quarter, so it was designed for the single-family house that was there, so it may be undersized. So I would look into whether four houses can be serviced by an inch and a quarter service line. If not, then you'd have to go out into Sagamore Ave, cut and cap it at the main and establish a new one. And that is DOT right away there, so that would be DOT authorization to excavate there.
Thanks.
Question? Is that something you'd input into your model that was done for the system?
Four houses in that spot, I don't believe it was, but.
Oh, but I mean, as far as, you know, whether the inch and a half would be suitable.
Like E one has a chart.
They do have a chart. I don't have it memorized.
Yeah, it was a chart for the project, right?
No, there'll be a chart from the manufacturer.
From E one.
Yep, just any houses, it's the size main.
Okay. And that's E one still, right?
Yes.
Yep.
May I ask, please, what determines whether we use sprinklers or whether sprinklers are necessary in these homes?
So you're required to have a fire lane that reaches within fifty feet of the front door of the furthest building of every building. And if the fire lane is greater than one hundred and fifty feet, which it is in this case, then you're required to have a turnaround. And if you don't meet those requirements, then the fire department can accept less than that if it's sprinkling. And that's. So that would be the answer to that question.
Those homes are very tight together.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen, okay.
Yep.
So is there a distance at which you say it's not required?
If your road was less than one hundred and fifty feet in length, then it would not be required.
It's the fire department access, not the distance of the homes together. Homes can be as close as they can be to actually do the work, as long as they're constructed with using fire resistant products. One hour each side rated, no windows, blah, blah, blah. But you can be, fifteen feet is no problem all day long. Windows, regular construction materials, but not meeting the fire department access, so that's why you gotta have sprinklers.
Not to mention how safe it is.
You're saying safer, you're saying?
Yeah. It's definitely a plus.
Is there work on this plan that's off-site? Like the trees on the edge look like they're on the abutting property and then some grading, I don't know if it's grading or just topo in the back that you're just showing. Is there any other work proposed off the site, or is it all?
It's all confined to our property.
It's all on the property?
Yep, that's right.
Does that rip wrap between the two lots, eleven fifty-one and eleven fifty-five, is that to be established?
It's part of what I spoke to regarding the possibility of combining that rain garden for that site with the new one proposed for this one, just having one single BMP to treat both lots, so that's something that we'll look into. I'd just see if we have enough space on our own lot, look at test pits just to make sure what we can actually put back there. So that's still up in the air at this point. That is the spillway from.
Lot's a condo, right?
I believe so, yes.
The condo documents have already been written? So they all have to be modified?
They would be modified if we were to do something like this. Yeah, that rip wrap is, I believe it's the spillway of that pond that serves that lot.
And then where does all that water go?
The low point is really on the left side, right at the, that bisecting property line, just kind of right in between the lots is the low point.
Yeah, where does it go from there?
I believe it continues to the southwest.
South.
I'm not sure what the ultimate discharge is from there.
So it's grading on the city property?
That's right. But again, we'll look at putting together that stormwater model, stormwater model with pre and post numbers as part of this.
Okay, so when you come back, that's what I'll be asking you about.
Yeah.
And is that?
The answer questions. Sorry.
Is that the same with the open space, you're still designing it, or?
Yeah, that's great.
Twenty-five percent, but I'm assuming you just haven't.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something we've included yet. Is that just open green space, or does the city look for some kind of recreation?
No, just open space.
Does the city maintain that easement? Because I know I go back there, it gets overgrown in the summer and the winter, the leaves are gone, but is that a, is that something that Public Works is supposed to do?
A easement to the conservation land?
The easement that goes back to the Sagamore wetlands.
No, that's not a city maintain, I mean, it could be maintained by the city, but it's more of a natural area, so that easement was supposed to be provided by the Seastar into that land, but there's no, there's no details on who maintains it. So if it's not maintained, it's something that maybe we could get some conservation or volunteers to do. We usually get volunteers to keep those trails open, if that's what you're talking about, like the public trails.
Somebody needs to do it because right now it's all overgrown, you can't even get back in there. I mean, I can go back with a, with a brush cutter, but I'm afraid someone's gonna say I'm not supposed to do that.
You're not supposed to do that.
So somebody's gotta do it, or else it's not usable.
Yeah, that's typically how we try to do it. We try to get volunteers to help with that. We don't have the staff at Public Works to maintain all the open space and trails like that, but, but it's good to know, so I'll make a note and we'll try to get, we go and get volunteers that'll come help.
How am I gonna volunteer?
If you do, if you do without electric, without a brush hog or whatever you're gonna use, that would be better. Yeah, let's talk about it offline, we can talk about it. If you're willing to go clear it.
In a world of manual nails either, I mean, we're, we're using.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we can talk about how it gets cleared.
All right.
Not like you can't use hand tools, I'm just saying a brush hog would not be suitable for that kind of.
Eric, are you on? Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm on now. My, you know, my only comment was at the driveway, just to make sure sightlines in each direction are unobstructed. I know that's, it was a problem with the, the site to the south of there having problems with the sightlines over this property, but now that they're together, hopefully they can work things out and keep the sightlines clear for each other. It'll have to go through DOT for a driveway permit, and that's one of the things they're gonna look for is the four hundred feet of sight distance each direction.
So when you bring it back, you'll have grading, grading and the stormwater out here?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, any other comments or questions from any of the TAC members?
Earlier I said eight-inch line coming off the street.
Yeah.
There's no hydrant at the end of this, so it could probably be a orange line. Possibly. You're gonna have to design the fire suppression system and determine how, what size main we're actually putting under that driveway.
Yeah.
Maybe a four, might be a six. Tell us what you need. About to abandon the existing water service off Sagamore Avenue at the main as well. We should have a fire hort, right? Is there a fire hort nearby?
There is a fire hort by Wentworth Road, it's not a fire.
So we're good, right?
This was paved, I believe, two years ago, so it is still under moratorium, but it's DOT, so.
It's DOT moratorium, uh, not moratorium.
Okay.
They're gonna be very happy with you.
Great.
Oh, I can't remember, your demo permit has already been issued. You guys slated to have that thing pulled down?
Yeah, he's already bringing his equipment over there to move it, so we're, we're not far off right now. As, as far as the tapping the water main, you're saying we're gonna tap it once for four inches, is that it?
What I said was, you're a fire suppression engineer. HVAC is gonna tell you what size main you need based on fire flow tests in that area, and then you're gonna tell us what size.
All right.
Cause you're not putting a, if you're putting a hydrant at the end of the road, you would be required to put in an eight-inch line. Fire department's not requiring a fire hydrant at the end of the line. Therefore, the size of the main is gonna be determined by the fire, by the size of the fire suppression system.
Well, we tapped the main twice, two two-inch lines next door.
One time.
Well, one was domestic, one was fire, sorry. So you are able to have one domestic line.
You could do it that way if you wanted to do two taps instead of one. So that might be more expensive.
Well, we, we're trying to tap, we're trying to tap this red wave before the season is out so we can get domestic water, because that was an issue next door. The only reason we had water is because we bought the house next door and took the water off that. So we want to make sure we have water going into this, and if we tap it twice, we're gonna have the same, basically the same system that we've got.
Next door.
Next door.
Yep.
Yeah, these are thirteen D, so the water requirements are very high.
So probably you could do the same thing. But we're gonna, you're gonna tell us what size taps you need.
Okay.
We're not gonna tell you, you're gonna tell us, in case you're wrong. We don't wanna be wrong. We don't wanna be the ones apologizing to the state, cause they're gonna be upset.
Anything else? Do you have any other questions, sir? Okay. All right, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have fourteen Market Street, Market Square.
Yeah. Yep, take care.
Oh, okay, I'll follow. So I have some good news. On Saturday, new state law goes into effect that limits the amount of parking we can require for residential dwelling to one space. So we're gonna, our ordinance will drop from one point three to one for over seven fifty, so that if you were point three over, likely not in your parking seat.
Actually, wait, it does apply. That makes this whole, we're, yes, we have one unit, that's nine hundred square feet, eight hundred ninety-nine. The parking space required is one point three. We're asking for relief for point three parking spaces, so if that goes to one point zero, that becomes a moot topic.
Okay.
But we still.
So it's in the co-living CUP.
See ya.
We had some, some comments on the co-living CUP, even though it's not required, but we figured since you're here, we could give you our feedback.
Well, there is still relief we're asking for, for the common space, and I'm.
Yeah, but that's a planning board decision.
Right, now that doesn't have to come.
We don't have to make a recommendation on that necessarily, so you don't necessarily need to go to TAC now with that. At least, you do now, but you don't on the thirteenth, so you really don't, because you'll be going to the planning board after the thirteenth. But.
No, we're just, we're looking at the common space you're providing.
Oh, yeah, that relief, yeah.
That's, doesn't have to go before this body, but we were looking at this anyway and trying to figure out any way you could make that closer to what's required. I mean, it's, it's only gonna be six hundred square feet where you need.
Yep, so the common space is six hundred feet smaller than the guidelines. However, the unit space is twelve hundred square feet larger than the minimum. So we could very easily just make the units way smaller and fully comply. But it doesn't work well for this layout because it's an existing building. And the recommendations that a unit, the minimum size is twelve hundred square feet for up to a double occupancy, that's ten feet by twelve feet. That's a pretty small room. These are about twice as big. They're, they average about two forty square feet. Plus, in addition to that, they have a private bathroom for each one, which is probably not anticipated the way the zoning was written, so.
So it would be good to have that explained, and we didn't see that, I mean, and we didn't see the sizes on the unit, so.
Yeah.
If you could, for the planning board, put the sizes and kind of give that justification.
All right.
Yeah, and then just, just in looking at it, it just looks a little tight. If, if there indeed is sixteen people, I know you probably wouldn't have sixteen people, but if you did have sixteen people trying to, trying to use that space, everybody has to cook their meals there and hang out there. It's, I know the rooms are bigger, so they might not spend as much time in the living area, so maybe you can make that argument, but it just looks a little tight to me with one small stove and a little bit of counter space for that many people to use that kitchen. So you can make, you'll have to make that argument with the planning board.
Okay.
But, but there's no other reason for you to figure it out?
Yeah, and your rationale for the distance of the garage made sense, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and your comments. Um, so.
Go ahead.
Shanti had something.
Um, this will be through the building permit anyway, but, um, I'm not sure what we're gonna, what this will be classified as in NFPA, if it's gonna be hotel dormitory or apartment building, or mixed. And I'm not sure that you'll be able to get away with a single exit from the third floor, depending on the classification and what is considered the number of dwelling units. So but there's things that we just don't know yet that we need.
Okay.
You guys to, come out as a code path as to why this is gonna be compliant.
Yeah. We'll do that.
I see.
We had one other request while you're here. The bicycle parking, I know there's bicycle parking adjacent to it, if there's any opportunity for parking in the building in the basement or something like that, it seems like this would be a typical use where there'd be a lot of bikes. So if there's any more bike parking you can provide, it's not required, but it's just a request.
Okay.
Hey, Peter, is there still a CUP needed for parking?
Um, no, because the state law changes on Saturday, so that will reduce their parking.
Okay, so they don't need to do the analysis of the parking then?
Right.
Okay. So I have no comments, okay?
All right, thanks.
So we see you on the thirteenth?
Well, no, the thirteenth is when the law goes into effect, so that's Saturday, so.
So we come back for the TAC public hearing, or do we get straight to the planning board?
No, you just go to the planning board.
Great, okay.
Apply, put in an application.
Great. Thank, thank you.
All right, next, we have eighty-four Pleasant.
Could I follow a question on the parking that you were just talking about with the state?
Yeah.
You guys can still have the units under five hundred, half a space.
Sure.
Do you still have that?
We just top out more than one.
Can't go over one.
You can't go over one, okay, thank, yeah.
Doesn't affect visitor parking.
In this, in the application before this, we didn't mention it, but that one has more parking than you need based on that.
Oh, right, right, yeah, yeah, now.
Now it does, what you're showing.
Almost like one in the garage is enough, sort of.
You only need one?
It's all you need.
They, they wouldn't wanna do that.
So I want more anyway, but you don't have to have it.
Right, I got you now, okay, I'll pass that along to Drew, thank you. All right, John Chagman, Haley Ward, Chris Mulligan. It's not quite three o'clock yet, so the rest of the team members aren't here, but we can start. It's efficient, except I can't speak to the building, so, you know, hopefully Patrick, he'll be here, Michael will be here, so. I think it was, oh, I know exactly, it was October of twenty twenty, we were here for a workshop.
Robert Formley.
Yes. Robert Masilia was here, so Shanti wasn't here, but everybody else pretty much was here, but anyway, it's been a while. And now the site has changed, that there's no Times building to try to match into, but there is a Times building replica that is a part of the plans, if you've looked at the renderings. Four lots that will be merged into one lot to make a developing parcel, that's this standard boundary plan. And we have a license plan is the next in the set. And the, the HTC wanted some cornices on the tops. So the cornices are gonna protrude into the city space, so that's what the licensing plan is gonna be about, it's about some cornices. Then we have a Northland photo plan showing the site from above today. There's basically two lots. When you combine the four into one, there's one more lot to the right that constitutes the whole block. And then we got existing conditions plans. And one thing of note is that in the bottom left-hand corner above the X-box crosswalk blockout, there was a street tree in that planter near the catch basin that's gone. And we've talked to the city and Max Waiter, I think, is, has indicated that the city will be replanting that. That's all set. And we have a demolition plan here, not much going on, except there is removal of eighty, some of the back of eighty-four Pleasant to keep in the facade. And then the rest of the site is vacant, and we have a site plan. The parking has changed from the previous, but it's still a structured system. And coming in off of Church Street. And then there's sort of a handicap spot on the left, first spot on the left, that is first floor only, that stays like that. But then you'll see three and three, and they're labeled eight parking spaces, so how does that happen? Uh, well, what, what it is, it's like tic-tac-toe, so, uh, there is an exhibit here in the basement and first level. There are the slots for the cars, and there's always the opening in the middle, and then, um. Want to bring up that, uh, yeah, want to bring up that. Um, we have a revised one here, this shows, be small, but the project site is gonna use the medium. Uh, parking system, if you go to that, yeah, oh, right there, so. You see the, the nine boxes, uh, the one in the middle is always open, so. Uh, someone will either come in and pull in there and then get moved. To their spot, which they vacated previously. Or, uh, when somebody leaves, they'll get moved to that middle spot and they'll vacate and that middle spot will be open. So that's the concept there, so it provides for eight parking spaces. On each side, does that make sense?
So sixteen spaces.
Sixteen plus the one handicap is seventeen.
And how much of that is below grade, all of it?
So it's, um. Um, it's kind of split, so the two floors. Compromise all that space, so they come out of the first floor, and there's two floors of parking, first floor and basement. I don't think it protrudes.
You drive into the, into the middle?
And you drive into the middle or you come out of the middle? Yep, and they get shuffled around, yeah.
So if you drive into the middle and it goes up, it's at the ceiling of the first floor, and if you drive in the middle, it goes down, it's in the basement?
Yeah.
It doesn't go any lower than the basement or any higher than the first floor?
Mike, you wanna come up? Uh, Michael Keen, architect, he's here, you can.
Not his head, yes, that's what I've been told. Yes, Peter, that's right, the, uh, at the first floor, we'll call the first floor of Church Street. It's basically a sixteen-foot high floor, because we're matching up that line with the Times building, so there's room to stack two of those above grade. And then one level is, is down below grade.
So it's partway down into the basement, it's not even all the way to the basement floor, really. What a typical basement floor would be?
Uh, it's about seven and a half, eight feet down, so it's a full. Down from Church Street, great.
Feels pretty tight.
Yeah, so would the, uh, people would drive their car into this slot themselves?
Yes.
And how, what, what's to keep, then they get out inside that slot and they have to get out of that area? What's, what's to keep them from tripping or falling inside there?
There's a, um, a flat platform that the car parks on, um, it's also a walkable surface. So they'd be able to walk out, and then there's protective gates, um, that would protect any of the open holes or anything like that. So that nobody could fall down into the lower spaces.
We're trying to get, uh, a, um, potential view of one of these, I don't know if you reached out to them, but we're, we're trying to. That was a comment last time, you know, can you guys go, you know, can you tell us where we can go watch this in the, in actual operation?
We watched something on YouTube. I mean, when we, well, I think it's the same.
No, it's different, it's a different system, the other one was a different system.
No, just today we did, we looked up, we looked up.
Oh, you looked it up, oh, okay. Oh, okay, cool, alright, so that would take care of that.
You think your, your handy, your accessible spot is outs, is outside?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that doesn't move, it's a first floor only, yes.
It, it's within the building, but it's outside of this parking system.
Right.
Yeah.
And these aren't considered accessible in any way?
Not ADA, no.
So I have a question about that, you have one accessible parking space and seventeen units, so you have seventeen parking spaces for the building, which is one per unit. And how do you decide who gets the accessible space, and what happens if they move? And someone else needs it, or, uh, you know. I guess I'm just trying to figure out, how are you gonna distribute the accessible space? Do you have a plan for that?
Not at this point.
That's same thing you have in every ADA spaces, it's kind of, you know, if somebody needs it, then they get assigned it. If nobody comes to the building who needs it, then it would be assigned otherwise. Then probably have to be some in the docks, I guess, that. You have somebody sell to a, somebody who needs it, then maybe the person has to change or.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a way to paper that up correctly, but, yeah.
That's what I'm getting, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, how do you, how do you make that, in the long term, if someone moves, that they don't come back and say, well, I want it. I need an accessible space, how do you? How do you meet that, or maybe you don't?
Yeah, I, I think you, you know, you build in some covenants or, um, restrictions in the, the governing documents. To make sure that that's, you know, a transferable space as when it's necessary. But it would not be locked into, you know, uh, would not be locked into, you know, exclusive use tied to a single unit. Uh, given that it's available for accessible, uh, so.
So the, owner or the condo association would have the ability to transfer it theoretically?
To make a reassessment, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And what happens if you have the second person who needs a handicap spot?
So, uh, I, I think the ADA, Eric, you know, once you get, before you get to twenty-five, there's only one required.
Two percent, I think, and then, but minimum one, so you've got the requirement.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, that's, that's, uh, something that might come up, but there's no way you can plan for that, you know, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Got the requirement.
Yeah, it kind of meets the requirements, and there are. Different. Placards, you know, uh. So, somebody that.
Concerns I have, the, uh, it's just the operations of this, how you, you're not pulling straight into this spot, you're coming in from Church Street. Which itself is gonna be a very difficult maneuver, Church is very narrow, and then you're gonna have to, you know, make a ninety-degree turn into this tight. Narrow tray, and I just don't see this being an easy maneuver. I like to see turning movements, you know, use auto turn, show how a vehicle's gonna get in from Church Street and then into this space for loading. And I'm very concerned that they aren't gonna be able to make this, these turns.
We can do that.
Need a carousel, you drive in and it just.
Yeah, that's.
If you had a turntable in the middle, that, that might be a lot easier, you know?
Yeah.
But it would be on city property.
Oh, yeah.
The, where's the handicap space?
The bottom left.
The first one on the left?
Yeah. There's no requirement for being accessibility or anything like that.
For van accessibility? Did you say van accessibility?
For van, handicap, van accessibility.
We have one, doesn't it need to be a van space?
Yes, and that's why that one's set up outside of the, um, parking system, so we have the overhead clearance for the van space.
So it's just not straight.
How about the unloading area?
The unloading area is right below it, I believe.
It's not shown in this picture, it's on another sheet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I understand.
But it's only five foot nine.
But I think it's an eleven-foot space, I think they got sixteen there.
Okay, yep. Good.
Um, so there's other features here, the recessed entries are shown, the corner cut at the street level. Um, there is a section of Pleasant Street sidewalk that's currently, uh, is it in the concrete or asphalt? We would anticipate that you'd want, it's asphalt, uh, so, uh, we'd, uh, anticipate you'd want it. Redone in brick, so it's a continuous brick sidewalk. Um, we didn't know if there was any desire to talk about that space that's currently. Partitioned off for turning movements and whether you want any landscaping out there, but, um.
We'll look at that.
Take a look.
I guess the biggest question that we have for the DBW is utility work. What's gonna be required, the power of this building and.
Sure.
Water it.
Yep.
Because we literally have paved every street around it in the last two years, so.
Understand, I know, so the, the power is coming in from the bottom right, uh, there's a cutout for a transformer.
Yep, saw that.
At the street level, and then there's building above with the clearances that, uh, EverSource has directed for us, so. There is, see the, there are overhead lines servicing down there, David, I was.
No, I, I know that.
Yeah, so if you go to the utility plant, you can see what my thought was, I don't know if we can land a pole. Uh, and then run underground, so, uh.
Land a pole where?
Uh, it's at the corner. The corner, like the block corner.
Somebody's parking space, right?
They can still get in and out, uh, because they're coming out to Court Street. And it's gonna get rid of those overhead encroachments over the church lot.
Church lot.
The lot to the south. That's what I thought, we can.
Let's see, and move the pole, and move.
These would go away.
Those would go away, the pole to the right of your cursor there is, I think can, we can plant and, and access. A, uh, a line and then run down.
Well, why would you think the pole would be not in line with where the wires are?
Um.
Wires are over the curb line.
Because that's the service to the Mr. Beatty's building already, so it's in line with.
Primary up in the air, right?
Yeah, it's an overhead.
Yeah, so you have to be under those wires with the pole.
So whatever, uh, the.
So that puts the pole directly in the, where the truncated dome panel is from that side behind that parking space. We're gonna lose a parking space. If you, if you drop a pole there. Needs to be in line with the curb line of Court Street. Kind of in the same spot you showed it, but seven feet to the right of it on the edge of Court Street.
Yeah, yeah, that.
Right at the end of that parking space.
Sure, okay.
The only spot it could be, so you don't lose a parking space.
Well, they have a truncated dome there, so, uh, I don't thi, I think they have three parking spaces, I don't think they have four.
I don't know, they might think they have four.
They might. They drive over the dome, so they can drive near the pole over the dome.
Yeah, but the, because of the turning movement, you can't put the pole right. Yeah, so that last space there is gonna be gone. Pole would have to be right in the middle of that space. To the right of where the cursor is. Yeah, and behind that a little bit, because the turning movements, you can actually see the tires coming out of Church Street. Yeah, so it would be, yeah, to right, right.
At the curb line.
Right, 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 right there, that's where the pole would be.
Okay, alright.
So, they're gonna lose a parking space, or unless it's not really a parking space, but.
It's really a parking space, but I don't know if they park the pole. Street every day. They park four there every day? They park it right up against, in that last space, it's right up against Church. Yeah. Well, David, I'm working on getting EverSource out there, so we can certainly visit this.
Or there's no transformer. On the pole next to that house that you're leaving. So you might be able to do a power drop on that pole.
There's no transformer, we've been sold.
Does the show one, so you could do a power drop, it's what?
November twenty-four, so.
Yeah, so it's recent, yeah, so you could come down that pole. But then you gotta do a loop, right? EverSource is gonna want a loop.
So I show a loop going out to the pole, out to the pole at State Street.
So you're gonna want another drop out there.
Well, that's where we could connect in and make a loop.
That last parking space is used, I'm looking at an aerial photo from April. There's a vehicle in that spot.
Alright, so that's that pole, and then maybe. You know, look at, see if there's enough width beha, uh, between the pole and the building to allow that.
Were you looking at the one on State Street at Church?
Pretty tight.
Yeah.
So you might have to move that building corner a little bit. So it's not quite so tight.
Or, or replant the pole, I don't know why the pole is, uh.
Because of the turning movements.
Oh, that's why?
Yeah. It's in line with the wires going down. State Street, seems to be, and it's in line with the, with the wires coming out of the other side of Church Street.
I show, uh.
That's where it wants to be.
Well, we show it deadening, dead ending, uh, that, alright.
Oh, there's three-way wires.
Yeah, but it doesn't continue down State.
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Hendrix up there, primary Hendrix.
Yep. It's offset, is it offset Hendrix or?
It's, um. Almost strapped directly to the pole practically.
Hmm, maybe we can offset it to keep that pole for the turning movement.
Yeah, give her that. May find a sign.
There's a pole in the alley that would come down, so. That's what I was thinking, you could put another pole.
Maybe.
I'm trying to set up a meeting with EverSource, and I'll let you know, Dave.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
So the transformer.
And then, yep, sorry.
That's in the building that you're showing?
Yeah.
Is that, how do you acc, how do they access that, just, is it just open from the street?
There's two giant gates that open.
Gates open.
They open the air.
Over the street, so you'd need an easement?
EverSource would have the keys to.
Okay.
So that if something happens to the transformer, it could get in.
They could get in, so it's just open air gates into a cave, basically, in the building?
Basically a cave in the building, yep.
It's a cave, it's a.
Fireproof cage inside the building that the transformer would have.
So they would need an easement for the gates, probably, if they're gonna come up the street.
Think that you make us do that for all the other transformers that open out onto the street.
Because they would open out into the street.
Temporarily, when they have to.
And they open once, uh, twenty years.
Right, when they have to shut it down or replace it, yeah. So Dave, you're continuing with utilities?
Yeah, water.
So I'm showing water coming in from Pleasant Street. Um, pretty much in the same location it does now into the eighty-four Pleasant, the Louis Building.
Okay.
About the three quarters of the way on the front.
Two services, one for fire, one for domestic.
Two services, yeah. It will be sprinkled, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, um, sewer, I'm showing.
Sewer's coming out on the State?
Yes. Showing that sewer coming out in the same location on the State.
Existing sewer services.
Uh, I think those are where they are now, based on what I got.
You need to go out, find those and abandon them.
I think it's a reused location, is what I, what I was getting at, um.
So State Street probably has a six-inch. Pleasant Street probably doesn't. Pleasant Street probably needs to be replaced, State Street is almost certainly new.
Talking about sewer?
As long as you're using the same one, we're good with it. As long as you're not trying to put too much fall into it.
So, uh.
Sewer would be going out to Pleasant Street and.
This, doesn't seem to be sewer in Pleasant Street, so.
It's sewer, I was gonna say, it's all rock out there, so.
Right, so we got this map, and there's, I can pass it down to you, Dave, there's two services shown into the eight-inch and State.
Just show them on the next iteration.
Yeah.
So that we can see it then.
So we were gonna reuse one, or put a new one in and abandon the old ones.
Yeah, and how about roof drains?
And then roof drains would go out, uh, to State, but, um. The.
And those are existing or proposed?
Good question, building's gone. Um, so, uh, there was talk about trying to match the drain patterns, because this might be in two watersheds. Back in the day, and now I don't have a roof, existing roof plan to go by, so if we can bring it all out to State, that's what I'm showing for now.
Bring it out to State Street. Final answer.
Okay. Super. Um.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. I think that covers it, gas uh obviously uh. Unitile would serve it from Pleasant Street.
What was that John?
Gas would come from Pleasant Street.
Where would you put the alcove for the gas meters?
Wouldn't it come from state, you're showing it off a s- showing a church there. Oh no, I'm showing it off of state, sorry, but um yeah, that's a minor question.
You're gonna need an alcove, they won't let you just put the regulators on the outside and.
Right.
They're gonna need an alcove, so.
Unless you showed that to H D C.
We didn't.
Sidewalk's wide enough, maybe we can, we'll we'll figure something out. Notch the building.
Sticks out more than nine inches, you know, so it sticks out too far into the public uh block by.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a a plow uh.
Just walk in, no.
Plow target.
Well, it's visually impaired, so walk along.
Oh, oh, sure, sure, right, right.
Yeah.
But you could you could screen it with uh.
Heavy barrier.
But anyway, well, notch the building.
Yeah.
We'll notch the building.
Yes.
Right? Uh and we'll put a faux brick type wall so it'll look like it's.
Oh, faux walls.
We have to get H D C approval.
Stop it. No.
No?
Amendment. Oops. Propertities.
Okay. Uh for the comment?
And with the transformer. And the transformer cave.
I'm sure that's shown, that's been that way with. Four or five years now, that was the plan.
That was the plan.
That was Plan G. They're looking for A through.
Yes, that's the Busby, that's the Busby, the Busby plan.
Yep. Do you think we could pole mount something maybe, you know?
No, pole drop.
Pole drop.
Without putting in another pole.
Right, gotcha.
Maybe.
The one on.
It was on your power draw.
The one on court.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eighteen hundred amps, eighteen fifty or something like that, so.
Yeah. I know the original plan was to tie in the transformer across the street. But. We'll see what EverSource wants to do.
Yep. Mic retired.
Yeah, but there's a new mic. There's always another mic.
You planning for ventilation system for the garage?
We are planning for it.
Trash storage is in the garage area?
Yes.
That may require separation.
Separation from the garage itself or separation from the rest of the building?
Uh from the garage itself. Possibly. Uh the building code is sprinkled protection or separation, but the fire code is sprinkled protection and separation for.
For clarity.
Will there still be dumpsters outside?
No.
That's what we're planning on.
The people that are using that space from around the corner might be told that they can't anymore. The driveway now.
I'm sure they'll be happy about that.
Is that roof deck um exclusive to the dwelling unit seventeen?
Yes.
I'm assuming that um there are doors going into the corridor from that, it's just not shown in on this rudimentary drawing here.
From the deck?
So that uh dwelling unit seventeen. Doesn't show any doors going to the corridor, it's going to the roof deck and then into the corridor from there, I'm assuming that.
Door?
Yeah. And then just make sure you have enough remotes in the basement ingress, I can't tell because. I don't think you have to count them. Across space in the diagonal, I think. I don't think you'd have to count across space. But still.
And who knows, there.
Or from here to there, maybe.
Storage.
Yeah.
I did check the separation distance on the um Church Street and State Street portion of the building. And we do need the separation distance there between those two stairs.
For the discharger for the actual?
Both ingress and egress to the to the stairway, yeah, and then there's another um access to the State Street stairway that comes in off of the parking area. So I think we'll meet our travel distance to exit there.
No restaurants, right like?
There may be a restaurant. Just had that, started having that discussion this week, what we do about grease traps and things like that.
So it would typically require a one thousand gallon exterior grease trap.
We understand there is a provision that if there's no room on the site for it, that it can be in the building? Based on review?
It's based on review.
We would not probably allow that on a brand new building. We have buildings in downtown that don't have those and we have nothing but problems. Several people will put them in the basement. It's what they have over at Jimmy's Jazz Club, they got a snorkel that goes down, the tank's in the basement.
That's what we.
Clean it out from the exterior through like a snorkel system.
That's what we were thinking we'd do, if we can have it within the building footprint, we'd put it okay.
Yeah, buy a full size tank.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yep. Yeah, we probably go somewhere where right now we're showing water suppression, water suppression room, probably go in that area so it could be accessed through the overhead door in the garage. And and hard pipe coming out, so.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
So that was the case where they'd be pumping it from?
Church Street.
Which would close Church Street. Look, I don't know how long it takes to pump those things, but you're not getting another vehicle through Church Street. Pumping the grease trap.
Well, I'd rather it happened there than Pleasant Street or State Street.
There you have room to get around it at least. Still get the file for a temporary closure for.
Not on Pleasant Street, you know. Maybe not on State Street if it goes too west.
April. I think where we where we put it at the corner Pleasant and State. Cause of the storefront there, but if we were able to get it there, do you think they could park in that um Painted Island? Not closing.
No remains of landscaping there.
You talking about the loading zone?
Could.
Yes.
It's a loading zone.
But they're unloading. So is there, is it, it's not possible to uh have Church Street to to arrange to temporarily close it because it's not. There's ways around it really.
I don't know, how often does it seem to give, I have no idea how.
It's probably once every two months.
Um typically it's once per month for um actually most users, um we've had um. Individual plans for, you know, very low grease producers to quarterly, but we we go once a month for typical.
Okay, so it's once a month?
Yeah, once a month, once a month, yeah.
It takes half an hour.
If that, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, about half hour, yeah.
Half hour once a month.
Should just throw it out there so everybody understands. You know, there's a grease truck there, you're not getting through. Yeah, it's. But somebody's inconvenienced, it's not like they're inconvenienced by ten miles, so, right?
That's your wisdom.
Puzzle left.
And then spit them out to Court Street, is that what you wanna do?
Yeah.
Okay. We're good, anything else? Alright, well, we we might submit later this month, but either way, it'll be next month and the the or the time after that, we're moving it along.
You all set Eric or you got?
Oh.
Yeah, Eric.
It would be it'd be great if you had some references where these parking systems have been used in the past, we can talk to the people who. You know, use this and see what the issues are, I I just re- really have great concerns with having people inside of this moving mechanism. You know, it's very narrow, how are they gonna open their doors, get out with packages and stuff and not fall through grates and whatever is in there? So I I really need to know a lot more about this system to have a comfort feeling with it.
I I think you do all your loading and unloading outside the system and then you just go into the system and leave. To be honest, you know, on that part of it, but yeah, we'll get that information. And I was gonna do a trip gen, but I don't think we need anything else, um Eric, is that, would you agree with that?
No, did, you know, drip gen's not critical, it's just the turning moments getting in and out.
Yeah.
From Church Street and then into the uh the slots inside the parking stacks.
I gotta buy the twelfth edition, so that's why I didn't have it yet.
That's right, they 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 always get you another edition.
Yep. If you if you can find a video of this exact system, just send it to me, I can.
Okay.
Yep.
But also places that haven't installed.
I did I did ask, this particular company doesn't have any place locally, they're.
It's the closest.
In the New York and New Jersey area and things like that, I'm sure there are there are competitors that probably have those technicals.
Field trip.
There you go.
Check it out or call them at least.
Yeah, I mean, could the system be turned ninety degrees that you're driving straight into it, I don't know.
Um.
No.
You would get eight, they get two of them.
And then you'd have to turn around a hundred and eighty degrees to get out, to drive out rather than backing out.
Oh, they'll they'll probably get help you with some stuff, they wanna sell the system.
Yeah.
You always go inner out the middle?
Yes.
That's that's what I understand, yeah.
Center square.
It's always open, the middle is always open.
My understanding is that they.
Signed.
That they will, that the pallets need to be um configured for your particular car, it's adjustable, so you. Each individual unit will have be assigned a pallet to fit to fit the car that they have.
Oh. Oh, it's not the available slot, it's your car slot?
Yeah, it's it's assigned, right.
And how long does it take from when you leave it on the thing till it parks, or how long is it to get your car maybe, better question?
Um I asked that question and didn't get an answer, but there's usually only the the maximum number of movements you would have to take, make is two, so I'm guessing it's less than a minute.
And and only one side of this could be in operation at a time, right, you can't have vehicles coming in and out together from each side.
Right, just because of the traffic conflict, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
The mechanism, the mechanism will work, but because of the traffic conflict, like any parking space, that is twenty four feet across the aisle, so it's like any parking lot really.
Yeah.
Other other than you're pulling into a narrower space because of the frame.
We're gonna need some, I think where you're going Eric, we'll need some sort of a system that says in use, stay on the street, right?
Yeah, because if someone's bringing their trash to this area at the same time, you know, vehicles are coming in and out, seems a lot of conflicts.
Yeah. Yeah, so there'll be a light on the on the outside.
Yeah, and is it the full eighteen feet or is there some of that taken up by the interior panels and, yeah, is there someone with a larger vehicle gonna be used, be able to use this?
Uh this is, this isn't set up for the largest vehicle, it's mostly the overhead, that's that's the restriction, this is this is a and the width. Um this is their medium sized unit, so yeah, if you've got an F.
Full size pickup.
Two fifty pickup truck with ladder racks, you probably won't be able to park in here.
I guess what what is the requirement, Peter, is that they have to be able to have a full clear eighteen foot length in the inside there to meet the requirements? So I'm thinking on another diagram it showed less than eighteen feet, no?
Seventeen, yeah, for the the small one. They've got one small, one medium.
But they're both gonna be mediums, right?
Both mediums. Sorry, that's.
The, yeah, if it was surface parking and you you had had a longer vehicle, you could extend out a little bit, it's not gonna hurt, but here, you you've got to make those requirements, those those measurements, so.
You have it labeled as eighteen, or we we labeled it eighteen, but the diagram is seven.
Yeah.
So the inside is seventeen.
Yeah, the actual usable.
Total space. Useful, useful space is seventeen, right?
Yeah, the actual usable space.
So uh there'll be a limitation, like like uh you you're not gonna get the extended cab with the tow package.
Mm-hmm.
And uh Suburbans, Suburbans maybe.
Sprinters.
Yeah, so so what did, would do you need to have a full eighteen in order to meet the parking dimensional requirements for site plan?
Yeah.
Question for Peter, I guess.
Eighteen and a half, I think.
Um I mean, a parking space is eight and a half by nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah.
With a twenty two aisle and a garage, and this has a twenty four aisle, so it kinda, you know, yes. And I guess you'll have to tell us what that means as far as uh. Relief of some sort, I guess, uh you know. It's a unique sort of.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be good to get as much information as you can.
Yeah, we'll get as much as we can.
Even if. Vehicles can hang out a foot or two, you know, if you if you have enough space to have nineteen, you know, with a twenty two foot aisle.
So there's no guest?
Even though it's twenty four. And the vehicles can hang out. Or they have to be completely within the.
Well, you want the twenty four to.
I mean, the bu- I know, I mean the.
And the machine won't, I'm sure it it moves the car where it wants it before it'll move.
Yeah.
When you put it in there, it it moves you like an automatic car wash, it moves around you, you know what I mean? It has to, otherwise it'll take the front off a car if you if you don't park it right.
Is it gonna be a generator?
Yes.
So this will happen, this will be on the backup too.
In the basement. Yes.
And where's the generator gonna be?
In the basement.
In the basement.
Vent it.
Vent it.
Hopefully.
Of course. I know they did some fancy lift parking spaces, right, at uh Audrey Place, did they end up doing that or?
They they ended up not doing that.
They ended up not doing it, yeah.
Yeah.
Couldn't make it work.
We have had some, just the lift ones.
Yeah.
In some places.
Right, right.
Yeah. Gets a little complicated suppression, wire suppression. Has uh has there been anything like this built, I know over the years it's been kicked around, I know we've ever built one.
Nothing like this.
Been talked about a couple times, but yeah.
No, I think Brewster Rooming House, they did just did a lift, right?
Yes.
At two level, but there's nothing like this where you slide around the puzzle.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
One car over another, yeah.
One car, your car over your other car.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another one and I need to treat, that's the same thing.
Hey, so your generator used to be in the basement?
Yes.
So it'll have its own, separate, it'll have its own room?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh.
And we did plan on, we generically showed um extra grills on the H D C for venting that also.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I'm gonna need to manufacture a specification for that. Fuel, the uh. Spillage for the fuel and, you know, consider all that, I'm sure you will.
Alright, all set? Hey guys, thank you for your time, appreciate it. Alright, we'll adjourn, thanks Eric.
Yep.